I'll be pressing it tonight.
Jared, are you going to be reading this entire? Thing here?
Word for word.
Oh, boy. Um, how many bottles of water you got on you?
I don't. Yeah, I'm just gonna bring a jug in.
Well, okay.
Oh, it's I was like, where's Jared?
Who? Where is he coming?
God.
Voice in your head.
It's about time.
You're always here. Well, what's what's going on?
I'm feeling very sick, so.
Thank you for staying home then.
Person. Yes.
Thanks for thanks for joining the live. On the stream. Um, well, I guess let's uh, let's call to order. It is seven oh three on March ninth. Uh, Kay, could you do roll call, please?
Yeah, McGee. Is not here. Jared Mork. Nicholas DeFrank.
Present.
Kate Giannetti. Is absent. Jess Rubson.
Here.
Jeff Daven.
Here.
Jay Engstrom.
Here.
And Nick Mission.
Here.
Oh. Is he here?
He is here.
Oh, okay.
I am here.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is. Hey, Nick.
Hmm. All right. Well, I guess uh, we just have a first couple little items here that we have to get out of the way before we start the the big discussion. So let's just uh, hop into these. The first item is uh, in regards to approval of minutes for the February twenty third meeting, which I was not at. Uh, do commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the minutes?
None.
Well, thank you, staff, for putting it together. As always, uh, but then with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'm gonna have a motion that was not here.
I wasn't here either.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I can go.
All right, I'm in favor.
All right.
Epstein.
Stain.
Stain.
Okay, awesome. Uh, next item is public comment for persons not on the agenda. Uh, if anyone in the public has something to present to the commissioners, uh, please step up to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom meeting. Um, is there anybody here that would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda? Now, I'm gonna like it. Okay. Uh, well, with that, we can move on to the next item, which would be the public hearing for the Meadowwood Employee Housing Regarding uh, Mike Major Site Plan Review as well as Alternative Compliance Minor Platt Amendment and Rezoning. Uh, Jared, Jared, you want to start off, what? Start us off with an introduction?
Certainly, um, I will try to be as brief as possible summarizing this. I'll leave a lot of the uh, details of the design and site plan to to Bob and his team. Um, but um, we do have a combined application, as you said, for a major site plan review, a minor plat amendment, a rezoning application, and an alternative compliance request. Um, so the combined application requires a public hearing recommendation by the Planning Zoning Commission and a subsequent public hearing and action by the Board of Trustees. Um, the proposal, um, in summary is to rezone and construct a fifty unit development, uh, residential development on Lot Two A of the North Face Base Camp subdivision. The fifty residential units will be in three buildings, generally at the corner of Meadowwood Drive and the High School Access Drive, and will include a mixture of studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom units. Um, and the proposal includes three main components. First is the rezoning. Um, so the proposal is to rezone Lot Two A from community arts to residential high density with Lot Two B remaining as commercial business park. Um, the second component is a minor plat amendment to modify the pop property boundaries between lots Two A and Two B. Um, and the third is a major site plan review and accompanying alternative compliance request. Um, and the alternative com- compliance request is for three project components. Um, a private outdoor space reduction, a deviation from the street landscaping requirements, and a parking reduction of three parking spaces. Um, I will note that this application was publicly noticed in Sopra Sun on February ninth, and the applicant did complete a mail notice and posting of the property on February thirteenth. So, um, a couple items of note, the land exchange and IGA. So, um, there's a little bit history of this property, a uh, the subject property is part of a three-party land exchange between the Roaring Forks School District, the Town, and Carbondale Arts. Essentially, um, Lot Two A was conveyed to the Roaring Forks School District. The Launchpad was conveyed to Carbondale Arts, and the Third Street Center was conveyed to the Town. Um, a subsequent IGA was agreed to between the school district and the town, um, and it concerned development uh, of the school site um, on Lot Two B. Um, within that IGA, there's three sections of note. First, Section thirteen states that if the school district does become the owner of Lot Two A, that it be subject to the IGA. The second section that I wanted to highlight is Section Five, which requires that any use other than school uses and school buildings, and it specifically calls out including housing, um, are subject to the town codes and regulations, including zoning subdivision and building codes, and that's important because that's why a school district property is being reviewed by the town, um, and not subject to just state um, regulations. And then the third is uh, Section ten, which states that um, the town's inclusionary housing ordinance um, does not apply to the development of the property. Um, when reviewing the comprehensive plan, this property is designated as public facilities on the future land use map, and uh, generally that aims to preserve community institutional uses, including housing. Um, some of the uh, comprehensive plan sections talk about um, housing as a top goal for Carbondale um, and prioritizing housing affordability and diversity as guiding principles. Um, other important goals of the comprehensive plan are related to climate action. When reviewing this proposal, um, staff did determine that the project um, does achieve the goals, policies, and intent of the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan. Um, diving into the specific components, the rezoning application, um, the purpose of the residential high-density zone district is to provide high-density neighborhoods, um, which include common open space and schools and other public facilities. Um, although the district is intended to be closer to some of the commercial centers in downtown, um, the proposed residential high-density zoning on this property is located close to schools, parks, and other residential high-density zoned properties. Um, and so the uh, proposed zoning amendment does have a greater level of compatibility with the surrounding uses than the underlying or the existing uh, community arts zone district. Um, rezoning from an obsolete zone district, which CA is, um, to a standard zone district is encouraged by and supported by the UDC and the comp plan. Um, and after referring this application out, all of the um, facilities and services who responded um, on the referral said they had the ability to serve the proposed project. So, um, after reviewing the application and this general zoning rezoning uh, criteria, staff has determined that the proposal does meet the review criteria for rezoning from CA to residential high density. The minor plat amendment, the second component, is a staff decision, but it will track with this combined application. So any final determination by staff will be based upon the decision of the Planning Zoning Commission and the Board of Trustees. Essentially, the minor plat amendment proposes to adjust the lot lines between Lot Two A and Two B to ensure that the practice fields are solely on Lot Two B, which houses the high school, um, while Lot Two A um, includes all of the proposed housing um, and the proposed uh, improvements associated with the housing, as well as a portion of the high school access road um, for site access. And there's really two main rationales for um, the minor plat amendments to um, ensure that the improvements associated with the housing are on Lot Two A. And the second is to ensure that Lot Two A contains enough lot area to meet all of the dimensional requirements of the UDC, um, including common open space, lot coverage, things along those lines. So, um, staff has determined, after reviewing the proposal, that the minor plat amendment does meet the review criteria for a minor plat amendment. Um, and as I said earlier, uh, a formal decision will will track later after um, Board of Trustee action. Getting to the major site plan and alternative compliance, um, I did want to highlight that the project does overwhelmingly comply with the UDC as outlined in the staff report. It complies with zoning setbacks, maximum pervious surface, building height, use regulations, private common open space, general landscaping, screening, fencing, site access, and circulation, building design, bulk storage, bicycle parking, and solar access, just to name one or two. Um, there are a few areas that um, I would do want to highlight, and they are um, related to the alternative compliance requests. First is the streetscape, streetscape landscaping. The UDC essentially requires streetscape landscaping between the edge of asphalt or the back of curb and the sidewalk. Um, the existing condition along Meadowwood Drive is sidewalk attached to the curb with a landscape, landscape strip. I'll learn how to speak eventually, um, behind the sidewalk. Um, this application proposes to continue that existing condition along the frontage of the property and does propose a larger twenty-five-foot-wide landscape area um, and does mimic the street tree condition that exists further down. Um, and so staff does believe the proposal meets the intent of the streetscape landscaping requirement, um, and the continuation of the existing condition is preferred by staff um, as to real, or instead of realigning the sidewalk. So, um, staff does believe this complies with the review criteria. Another area of note that I outlined in the staff report is um, regarding parking lot landscape islands and the covered parking areas. So, um, currently, there's a row of thirty-three consecutive parking spaces along the northeastern pop property line, which are covered by a covered parking. Um, after some conversations between the applicant and staff, um, there was an indication that that could occur as a second phase of the project or after the primary construction of the housing. And so staff did recommend um, a condition of approval, which would require compliance with the parking lot landscaping requirements if that um, co- covered parking didn't occur or was not completed within three years of the um, issuance of, or the first certificate of occu- occupancy being issued. Um, I did want to note that based on just some basic calculations that could result in a net loss of four parking spaces if um, compliance with the parking lot island requirements um, was made.
To that point here, then, so what? Typically, those planted islands would be smaller than a space. We're here, you're just gonna take an entire space.
For per simple calculations,
Yeah.
the applicant would obviously redesign that area, and it may not be a complete for space loss, but just a cocktail napkin calculation.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Um, the private outdoor space and alternative uh, alternative compliance requests. So, um, as you guys are aware, the UDC requires private outdoor space for each unit, and that's based on the gross floor area as well as the location of the ground floor or above-ground floor unit. All of the units meet the minimum required dimensions. Um, and the majority of the units comply with the minimum required area. Eight of the studio units um, within Building C are proposed to be slightly less than the sixty-square-foot minimum size requirement. Um, the applicant does cite their smaller size and design limitations of the building, um, as well as the larger common gathering area as both constraining and mitigating factors um, to the design. So, um, the applicant did prepare a study um, which demonstrates how compliance would be achieved, and we included that at the end of the uh, in in the revised and the additional drawings and revised plans portion of the uh, of the packet. Um, and staff, after looking at the uh, study which demonstrates how compliance could be achieved, staff does believe there is merit to their request. Um, but does defer to the Planning Zoning Commission, who should consider this request and determine if the criteria are met. Um, parking, the parking request is essentially a reduction from ninety-three required spaces to ninety proposed spaces. Um, and the applicant does cite maintaining the size and the integrity of the central common area for the benefits of the overall project as one of the limiting factors in the design. Um, when reviewing that alternative compliance request, um, staff does agree that the design does benefit from the, the overall design does benefit from the reduced parking. Um, the larger and more functional common space, the additional bike parking, the proximity to employment, and the large uh, school district parking lot located within close proximity to the building are all um, factors that could help mitigate the reduction onsite. But um, with that said, a parking reduction is um, potentially a a slippery slope, and staff did kind of raise some concerns about that reduction. So we did work with the applicant to prepare an alternative design if the Planning Zoning Commission is not supportive of the alternative compliance request. And as you can see in that alternative design, um, three spaces would be installed on the south side of the High School Access Drive. Um, it's probably likely if the uh, parking lot landscaping, the parking lot islands requirement needed to be met, that those additional spaces would be located in this same area.
Added two to three.
It it could, yes.
If we went in that direction.
Correct. Um, so with all of this said, staff does recommend um, that approval of the project, or does recommend approval of the project with the recommended motion, conditions, and finding listed in the staff report. Um, I did want to highlight one last thing. Um, within the staff report, at the end in the recommended motions, I did include um, alternative optional findings that I tried to draft, um, if the Planning Zoning Commission supported the um, alternative compliance request for the private outdoor space and the parking. Um, and that was kind of a, a first take at, you know, trying to find ways of creating site-specific findings that tied the alternative request, alternative compliance request to this specific design in this specific location. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Otherwise, I'm sure Bob would love to introduce his team and take you guys through the project.
Awesome. Thank you, Jared. Uh, do we have any questions for Jared?
Um, Jared, you had mentioned that there are additional parking spaces illustrated on the plan. Is that correct?
Correct. There was, after the initial packet of um, site plans, there are some additional studies, and one of those demonstrate the building being shifted to the south. Another one demonstrates three parallel parking spaces on the site plan. I don't have the packet pulled up, but I would guess it's probably somewhere in the hundred and fifty-page range of the packet.
Yeah. Okay. No, I get it now. I see. Um, great. Uh, this is, this is something that came up, I think, more in the applicant's address here, or address, I mean, call it. Um, but we seem to have quite a few more required parking spaces than our fellow neighbors. Um, I guess, is this? Is this something that, like, we are, you know, supposed to be reevaluating then, or I guess I'm, I'm just confused as to why these numbers are so different?
Neighbors as in neighboring communities or neighbors as in neighboring projects?
Neighboring communities. So Aspen was like fifty, I think, and Willets was substantially less. Um, I guess I'm just not sure exactly where we're getting our numbers from. This is something that um, you should take a look at. I don't think it really applies to this project. I'll withhold my comment and any question. We can talk about it in another meeting.
Sounds good. And any other questions?
Nope.
No questions.
All right, then, uh, I guess let's move it along to the applicant.
One.
Sorry.
Um, the, after the applicant gives a presentation, then we'll open it up to the public to ask any questions or anything that they might have about the project. Thank you.
Hey, is our, is our level of speaking acceptable for the audience?
Yeah. I think as long as you're the red light is on.
Okay.
Um, and this is pretty sensitive, so it should pick up.
We brought the whole team tonight in the hopes that we can answer any questions that come up and uh, that you'll be able to give us some direction. Uh, this is basically the team that brought the Third Street Project together with the school district, and we're very proud of that. And certainly, the people that live there have expressed to us that they enjoy living there. So Jeff Gatlin is Chief Operating Officer for Roaring Fork Schools. And uh, on your screen, that handsome man is JV De Souza, who is the head of the architecture firm that's did the architecture in Third Street and is doing this project. Uh, JV does uh, mostly, most of his work is affordable housing. And Aaron Ladner, who has been hauling the heavy load on this one, who works with JV. We've got Randy Rice, who is the landscape architect from Norris Design, Kyle Sanderson from Sopris Engineering, and um, he has been the engineer on this project. Riley O'Brien is the owner's representative. Uh, the project hopes to uh, break ground in May or June of this year and be available for uh, school district employees for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So it's an aggressive uh, program, but um, we're, we're pretty excited about it. We're here to share the, the design and go through uh, the requests that uh, Jared outlined. Uh, I'm sure all of you are aware of the situation with housing. It's an issue for everybody, but for a large employer like the school district, it's an even bigger consideration, and I think all of us want them to have the ability to hire the best uh, staff that they can to serve the children in the community. Uh, in in terms of the site, uh, we looked at all the possibilities for the uh, school district properties. And uh, after doing a few months of analysis, came up with this one, and um, the red box there is uh, Jared mentioned Lot Two A. That's the current configuration of Lot Two A. And the rest of the property is uh, Lot Two B that, where the high school is. Uh, it's, it's a pretty great location for this type of housing. There's um, the Villas de Santa Lucia and Carbondale South, which are both uh, residential high-density across the street. Uh, obviously, there's great parks and recreation opportunities. It's very close to uh, school district employment centers. Uh, the school district, the fire district, and the town work together to create uh, and fund improvements at the intersection of one thirty-three and Meadowwood. So there's plenty of capacity for uh, for this uh, project in this location. And um, the school district, um, I think the in- initial hope years ago when we started this was that people can move out of school district housing into the market, and that's not really an option today. So uh, if we want to keep the staff that's there, we have to add more housing because the people who are in the housing are not finding ways into the free market uh, right now. Uh, this reiterates what Jared just said. Here's what we're asking for. Uh, staff will deal with the minor plat amendment. Uh, you're asked to make a recommendation on the rezoning, the major site review, and the three alternative uh, compliance options. This is the minor plat amendment, so this would be the reconfigured uh, Lot Two A. The existing lot's about two-point-seven acres. The new lot is about three-point-four. And then Lot Two B, the remainder of the property where the high school is, goes from twenty-four-point-six acres to twenty-three uh, point eight.
Okay, but but good, sorry. Um, do you have any idea on what's currently happening? Or what programming would be impacted, pardon me, on Two B? Is that gonna come later in this?
Yeah, uh, that was actually one of the driving forces in the site uh, design, so we'll, we'll get into that.
Cool. Sorry to cut you off.
So the UDC gives staff some uh, direction, the planning director, on what to look at for a minor plat amendment. And uh, this property meets all of those conditions. Uh, and staff is supportive of that uh, minor plat amendment pending action on the remainder of the items. In terms of the zoning, um, I won't get into a great detail about history of this property, um, but would like to touch on a few things about how we got here. And this was the Smith Ranch, and when it was annexed into the town, there have been a number of big ideas uh, for this. George Stranahan had it under contract and uh, brought forward a plan for the community school and an uh, artist village on this property that was not successful. And then uh, later, North Face uh, purchased the property with the intention of moving their national headquarters to Carbondale. A few uh, North Face employees made their way to Carbondale, and then there was a change of leadership in the company, and that plan eh, evaporated. Yeah, in the midst of all this, uh, a Lot Two A was uh, carved off for Carbondale Arts to build an art center there. And so that's the basis of that that particular lot and the zoning that's on it of uh, community arts. The only two times we've used that zone district that I know of is the Third Street Center and, and here. And uh, it was created for this parcel. And the same thing with the, the other, the rest of it, uh, the North Face Park and the high school site, the uh, community business uh, Zone District was uh, designed for this North Face proposal that, that didn't materialize. The uh, I was lucky enough to be involved in the putting together the three, three-way trade. Uh, the deal with North Face to donate the parcel was use it or lose it. If the Arts Council didn't develop it by a certain date, it would go back to the original owner. Uh, at the same time, the school district was getting ready to tear down Carbondale Elementary School, and the town had a parcel at the corner of Second and uh, Main Street. And so we arranged a three-way trade where uh, the end result is that we got the Third Street Center and, which was pretty exciting. And uh, the school district got the land adjacent to theirs that now is available for housing. I bring all this up because if none of this had ever happened, and we were looking at this parcel and saying, what's the best use for it? I think we would say residential high density and uh, just, we let, we got this zoning through through that little bit of a story. The criteria that we look at for uh, rezoning, uh, we believe that um, it's consistent with the com- comprehensive plan uh, designation of public facilities. And uh, we think that it's uh, the site plan is consistent with the uh, UDC, uh, the underlying uh, requirements for uh, high-density residential. Uh, we, we're unaware of any significant impacts uh, that they haven't been identified to date. And um, the facilities have been determined to be available, both by our engineer and the town's engineer. People come like us and put site plans in front of you, and so what I like to do once in a while is just try and take a step back and say, well, how did we get here? What did we think about that led to the plan that you're gonna be looking at? So for me, you start with a couple of things. You, you start with a site. What is this site about? And what are the opportunities and constraints? And then what's the code tell us? And those are um, not always confluent, but you know, that's the job, is to figure out. So when we started with the site, there So when we started with the site, there are fantastic views of Mount Sopris. And this is pretty, pretty awesome opportunity. We have that frontage to Meadowwood that's, that's important when we started working at Third Street. It was really important to us that that building make it more comfortable and alive for people who want to walk to the Third Street Center, lights on, presence to the street. So that if you're coming from Sopris, there isn't this dark area that you're walking through. So we spent a lot of time thinking about that and uh in designing that. And the same thing is true here. People going down to the park that it's gonna feel um alive when you go past the site. There are existing trails that go to the park and then pass the park connect uh to additional trails. There uh is the, the trail that's used by students primarily going up to the high school. Uh, one thing that we had a different plan and then we met with the, or Jeff met with folks at Roaring Ford High School and they said, get off of our practice field. And so we then came up with a new plan and because we needed to uh change the boundary and, and make the project work differently. Because that was important at this time to their programming. We've got that gravel lot next door, uh which is a consideration. It's a little not your favorite view of the, the whole site, so we have to think about that. The Ella ditch sometimes overflows. We met with uh staff early on and Kevin said, you know, it doesn't happen all the time, but it's gonna happen someday. So you should think about how you're gonna uh deal with that if it overflows. The adjacent uh properties, the villas are two stories and the Carbondale South is three stories with a garden level. And so that kind of scale was something that we wanted to put into our thinking process. The fire training facility, we met with the fire district early on and said, is there anything you're doing here? That would mean we shouldn't put housing next door. And they said, no, this is a big propane grill. And we can turn it on, we can turn it off and you're gonna be fine. So that was okay, thank you. And, and then finally, we have to think about what if they need more in the future housing. And so we wanted to uh not lay out a future plan, but create connectivity that would allow that if it's necessary in the future. So that starts us in one direction and then we go to, okay, what's the code allow? And um the variety of students of, of unit types was something that I think you'll see reflected in the plan. The buildings fronting the streets was really a uh, you know, it's kind of what the UDC is about in some levels, the form-based aspect of it. It wants buildings running streets. And so that was a, a good guide. Energy efficiency, um some of it's in the code, but a lot of it is just in the zeitgeist of the moment that we're in. And so it's not really codified, but we're aware of that interest. Bulk storage is, is a big deal for everybody in town. So uh and the UDC provides some guidance on that. The private outdoor uh space, having the roof move, the planes move so that the buildings aren't uh rectangles and um trying to take advantage of views is one of the things that's in the UDC. And then keeping parking more internal to the site rather than uh external to the site. So when we thought about all those things, we started saying, well, where, where could we put some buildings? And uh this was after we learned that we couldn't touch the fields. And so we started thinking about this and thinking, okay, so what if we started working from this direction? We've got uh, the, the street frontage that uh we think is important. We've got some views. Uh, we've got the ability to do a larger building uh in the internals of the site. Okay, let's see, let's see where that leads us. And that led us to uh something like this. There have been a few iterations, but uh this is uh the current site plan. So the um the idea was that you would have a strong corner at Meadowwood and the high school access drive. And that would really plant the buildings on the site and that anybody coming down the trail or going to the high school would uh, would be met by, by that. And then the people going over to the park, walking their dogs or going to play pickleball or baseball or whatever. Uh, they would continue on that existing trail that lines up with the uh, the trail in front of the park. Uh, there is no sidewalk along the fire district, so people come from the other side of the street and they cross over uh by the high school access road and then, and then go down towards the, towards the park. The uh the way that we configured this, we'll use the driveway that is towards the gravel parking lot. So that if uh the Ella ditch does overflow, there's a, it can use the driveway to evacuate the, the water until they get it unclogged. Uh, the covered parking is trying to create some sense of separation from the um gravel parking lot for for this project. Uh, it, yeah, anybody who's building anything today knows uh it's a bad time to be building cost-wise. And so we are, those are on the bubble. Uh, whether they can be built in phase one or not will depend on the final engineering, final design, final construction bids. But that's the uh, that's the plan. And uh then there's some tuck-under parking below Building C. So uh there are spaces underneath the, uh it would be the northeast side of, of that building from the access road. And then Building A and Building B are two stories. And that matches the uh kind of the feel uh from the street. And then Building C is three stories set back into the site. Uh, the project started with doing a um survey of school district employees, about four hundred employees responded and told us what their needs were. And then we did one-on-one interviews with residents of current district housing to try and find out what really worked and, and whether there are things that needed improvement from the uh, original um three projects, one in Glenwood, one in Carbondale, one in Basalt. But the only thing uh, or two in Basalt, but the only thing that was built by the school district is the Third Street one. So that shifted our, we were uh originally thinking more studios and one bedrooms. And uh the feedback was uh, we need two bedrooms and three bedrooms. So there are sixteen uh three bedrooms, sixteen two bedrooms, ten one bedrooms and eight studios in the uh proposed unit mix. So great variety. This is Building A as you're going down the bike trail, uh past the um past the access road to the high school and before you get to the gravel parking lot. And so that gives you a sense, the, the landscaping in this image is not uh really the landscape plan. It, it's meant to allow the buildings to, to show through. So if you put a bunch of trees in there, then you can't see uh, can't see the building. So this is what most people would see walking along uh the trail. It has eight two-bedroom units in it. And these are all uh front door facing Meadowwood, uh patio facing Meadowwood. Once again, to try and create some interactivity between the street and these residences, lights on. Uh, the, the living rooms are facing Meadowwood. So that once again, it enlivenes this area and has some lights uh for anybody who's walking out there at night and, and so forth. The bulk storage units are internal to the site and uh parking is internal to the site. Building B is the one that's at that corner of the hack access road and Meadowwood and then continues up the uh access road. And it's also a two-story uh structure. There's about a twenty-foot separation along Meadowwood between Building A and Building B. So there is a nice pedestrian uh accessway between the buildings to, to connect through into the center of the site. The location of this uh drawing is right where the uh coming off of the high school access road into the parking area. So you can see Building C in the background and the uh common area. Building B has four two-bedrooms and eight three-bedroom units. They're stacked. So when you see a floor plan like this, it's two floors of that same uh program. And uh one of the things that I really uh take my hat off to JV and Aaron on these, if, if you can see it, the three bedrooms have a bedroom that's eh eh separated from the other two bedrooms. You don't see that in affordable housing very often. That's a, that's a premium layout for people who a little separation from the kids and have their own little world. Building C is three stories and is internal to the site. So this is looking at it from that central common area uh at the uh, at the building, the, the um building is three stories, it's denser, there are more units in the others uh than the other buildings. And uh this is a good, from our perspective, location for that. Because it's set back a little bit from the, the streetscape. We also wanted, thought it was very important for that common area to be their front yard. So the units along Meadowwood and the access road have a nice front yard space. So this common area becomes their front yard. So there's no road they have to cross or anything like that. So if you have kids and they're going out to play, they don't have to cross a parking lot to, to get out there and, and do it. So it makes the density uh pretty livable from, from my perspective anyways. The ground floor of Building C, uh there are uh five studios, I was trying to count them, and one one-bedroom unit. And the studio patio, patios on this level are oversized. And you can see the tuck-under parking uh that's in the upper part of your screen and the bor- bulk storage units for the, the whole building. Uh, Jared's um Jared's report notes that uh the bulk storages are all over and above the requirements. The second and third floors of Building C are also matched. So what you see here is both on second and third, it's the only place on, on the uh on the site where there's a internal corridor. So uh uh, the second and third floors have that internal corridor. You have the three-bedroom units on the end, the kind of salmon color uh are the studios. And then you have the what's that color called? The one bedrooms, Aaron? Orange. The uh the second and third floors mirror each other and it gives us a chance to meet a, a wide variety of uh housing needs uh in this building. This is the two levels that have the studio balconies that are undersized. Uh, if you look at the salmon-colored ones, uh you can see how the balcony looks a little smaller. So they are six foot deep. They do exceed the five percent uh requirement, but they're forty-six, forty-seven square feet instead of sixty. Uh, we would prefer to spend that money out in the common area. Um, and we'll show you the consequences and why we, why we undersize those a little bit. The material palette is very similar to Third Street. Um, and so you have the fiber cement uh used as uh a baton board configuration as well as a ship lap, uh creates some texture, some shadowing, and then stucco. And um if you've driven by Third Street and looked at those units, uh there's, there's a very similar uh palette at that building. Utilities and, and infrastructure, um we'll talk about this a little bit more, but after advice from uh people who we have a lot of respect for, we decided not to bring gas into the site and do all-electric. Uh, the uh town will provide water. Uh, and the, the irrigation system will tap into the one that's existing today. The school district and the town share an irrigation system out there. And we met on site with uh, with, with the district's people and the townspeople and we've got a plan for how to tie into that. And we had a little traffic study done, sent it off to C dot uh to confirm that the intersection would operate uh just fine. And they said, yes, you're well within the current access control permit. You don't need to ask for a new access control permit. So we feel pretty, pretty good about that. In terms of landscaping and the common area, uh it's a low-water uh plan. Uh, so other than trees, you're gonna find a lot of uh uh mulching materials and uh small, small bushes and uh the central area, the kind of bigger triangle has also, in addition, uh it serves as detention area. So take some of the stormwater and, and percolates it into the ground there. There's a, a uh children's play area that's great, and greatly exceeds the four hundred square foot required by code. And there's a common area somewhere to what we have envisioned from Third Street. Uh, if you've been out back where the grill is in the picnic area that uh kind of gives the people, particularly in the studios, a place to entertain so that you can have a, your friends over and cookout and so forth. Uh, one of the things we uh learned early on when uh staff pointed out the uh, the agreement about the town reviewing it, well, the school district buildings have to be reviewed by the state. And so for reasons that I haven't been able to understand, back in, I think it was two thousand and one, the school district agreed to this uh agreement with the town that makes it so that they have to go through two review processes. And uh working with the town, we're hoping to consolidate that into one and uh have the town do the review for the state. But there's a process that you have to get through. Uh, the, the importance of that is that the state uses the twenty-twenty-one I E C C code and the town was twenty-fifteen. I think they recently adopted twenty-eighteen. And um twenty-twenty-one is tougher. It's uh uh building built to twenty-twenty-one I C C, I E C C is about ten percent more efficient than one to the twenty-fifteen code. So every generation of the code, we're becoming more and more cautious about energy issues and uh and then Jeff Dickinson is a friend of mine and I called, we, he was one of our reviewers when we did the Third Street Plan. And uh, sent him the plans and said, what do you think? And he said, you need beneficial electrification. And I said, well, can you send me a link to what that means? Cause it's a great phrase, but so we read up on that. And um so that's, the decision was made to go all-electric and then we're putting in six EV charging uh stations and we're laying conduit for thirty-three more, anticipating that there's a day in the future where most of the people who live here will be needing to charge their car. Their roof locations, uh some of the roof's gonna be used by the heat pumps, but some of it's available for solar, if that becomes a uh, something that we can do in the future. So that's kind of where we're headed on that. In terms of the Meadowwood streetscape, uh we met uh early on with Kevin uh Shoresman and asked, okay, so the code's telling us this five-foot strip. There isn't one today. And if we put one in, then we gotta jog back to line up with the existing trail. And he suggested that we not do that and that we use the route that's there now so that those going to recreation are not. So that's what we did. And uh that requires a uh alternative compliance to, to do that. On the parking front, um the code uh gives us ninety-three as a target. And we've got ninety. When we look for where uh we would pick up three more spaces, the answer is all infringed on that central common area. And I'm very protective of that. I really think that that's the key to livability if you're having density. Uh, same thing we did at Lot One where we put a lot of energy into that park at the center of the property because if we're gonna have density, then we need uh location for people to sit outside and, and enjoy the place where we live. We feel very comfortable with ninety spaces and uh we don't think it's underparked. Um, I understand where the code's coming from. Most of the affordable housing stuff that I work on, we use about one point four spaces per unit. Uh, the UDC doesn't discriminate between single-family homes and multifamily. When we do trip generation, we use two totally different scales, right? A single-family home is ten point something trips per day. And a multifamily is like five point something. Uh, but when we come to parking, we require the same thing of somebody living in uh a single-family one-bedroom as a one-bedroom multifamily. Having said all that, uh, we will show you what we would do if you, uh, if the town doesn't support. Uh, reducing those three spaces. The area is a sea of parking from my perspective, just speaking for myself. Um, there's a hundred and fifty plus space lot that you see in the center of the screen there, that number of cars that's there. In this image is about the most I've ever seen there. There is, you know, I mean, and then there's just, yeah, it's, uh. Enough said. Don't get me started on parking. And, but what would we do if you said, uh, town says, no, build it? We would go on the, uh, south side of the high school access road. And, and build some spaces. That's going to cost money, that's money that comes out of the common area. The other idea would be to put them in the common area that would be from a engineering perspective, the cheapest way to do it, but. We got to protect every inch of that. In my mind, it. The eighty some percent of the time, no one's using the practice fields. That common open space that's currently pretty modest becomes big. Because now you've got the practice fields to go out and throw a frisbee on and walk your dog and so forth. So, uh, that's what we would do. On the studio patios. As I mentioned before, they're a little short of sixty, uh, square feet. If we want to increase that, we have to. Push the. Dimension from the building out. And, um, and creep into the, the common area. And, um. We really believe that. We've got something that works for the people who live there in the current plan. If we, if, if you said no, you, you gotta. Give us the sixty feet, uh, the building moves. And, um. It moves into the common area, we lose about four feet in width in the common area, six hundred and thirty feet total space. And, um, the crunch comes in the children's play area and the communal space. The paths have to be the paths because of ADA and accessibility issues and, and, uh, so that's what has to, what has to give. Uh, on the backside, we need to, uh, we need to have a fire truck be able to get through there unobstructed. So they can't go that direction, the only way they can go is toward the common open area. So with that, um, thank you for your time and we, uh, we hope that you'll, uh, be favorable, uh, we appreciate staff's work on this. Uh, I, uh. You know, this has been a pretty iterative process and, uh, I appreciate the, the staff's position and their. Uh, their recommendations to you and we hope that you'll recommend to the trustees that they approve the, the plan. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, I forgot.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I also wanted to say thanks for taking time to go through this, uh, tonight. We, uh, the district was fortunate back in twenty fifteen to have the support of our voters to approve a hundred twenty-two million dollar bond program. Uh, of which fifteen million dollars of that was to start a staff housing program. And we're, we're really proud of, uh, of the Third Street, uh, housing project that was an outcome of that. Um, and unfortunately, housing was difficult then. And it's way more difficult now. And so recruiting and retaining staff for us, a- a- as you know, a- and certainly shared by others. It's critical to what we do. When we first started our housing program, we saw internal demand for housing units at about two applications per every unit. We're seeing the demand over ten to one right now, whenever we advertise, uh, a vacant unit across our program. So adding more units to our program is critical to the success. Uh, what we're trying to do, um, so certainly appreciate, like I said, the time tonight and, and hopefully the continued support. As we, uh, as we try to work through this. Thanks.
Awesome. Uh, thank you guys so much. That was a very thorough presentation and you guys have put a lot of work into that, so. Uh, very much appreciate also the, uh, the purpose of this. Project in itself. So, uh, with that, I guess, uh, do we have any questions for the applicant?
Thorough. Thank you for all the information. Really well organized. I'm still metabolizing it as you receive.
I know, right? Yeah. It's a big project. Jared, did I hear you, uh, popping up there for a second?
I did. Um, I don't really have any questions, um. And I think that's due in part to, uh, why I wanted to commend JB and Bob and everybody involved, uh, in our design. This is extremely thorough and, uh, incredible work. I think it's, um, I think it's great what you guys have put together, um. And, uh. I think the. The thing I'm most excited for, and this is something that I'm always bringing up in here, is the extended, um. Uh, bulk storage. I think that's something that I always find to be lacking in a lot of these applications. And so for you guys to put a priority on that, or at least recognize. Um, the community and what we, um, actually do and how we recreate in this, uh, community is, is great. So, um. Yeah, I think it was just spectacular, um. I don't really have any questions, um, it just seems super. Cut and dry. Um, I think the only thing that I had was. Uh, an actual question was, you know, I know we have the fence right up against, uh, the practice fields, um. Can you explain a little bit more about the conversations with, um, I'm guessing that's football or soccer, uh, that goes on there? Like, is there? Uh, any concern about like rogue balls coming into the house or any sort of protection that we have in plan or in place for that?
Didn't follow the.
So along the fence, um, I guess you can't really see. My screen, I'm pointing here, but like where those practice fields are there, um. I'm just wondering if, you know, let's just say somebody kicks a ball over there, um. What are we looking at for protection from, you know, if there's people outside there or somebody on their deck or something like that? Is that, has that been a consideration? Have you talked to the coaches or anything like that?
Yeah, so the, the fence design was specifically, uh, it's staggered basically, so that way if any balls do go over the fence, there's lots of permeability there. We wanted there to be, um, a barrier to that people could kind of know where the practice fields start and where the, the housing property ends, but we also want. The, um, people in the housing to feel like they can use those fields when they're not being used by, um, players. And students, but, um, the way the, the fence is staggered, if any balls do go through there, if they go over the fence, it's really easy for people to run around. Run through the fence without having to like. Run four hundred feet to the south, go around the end and run all the way over there to get the ball, so.
And the fences are going to be subject to a fence permit that will be submitted with the building permit. It's, it's still a moving target because we haven't determined whether we'll, uh, be able to pay for the carports in phase one. And so, uh, that we really won't have a final fence plan until that. Uh, bidding is done, uh, because if we can't. Build the, um, carports right away, we'll probably pu- put in a fence along that. Uh, borderline by the yellow ditch. So those are there more for. Conceptual purposes at this point, rather than asking you to approve the fence plan. That will come. With the building permit.
Got it. I wasn't looking at keynotes, but the privacy screens, those are just for residential units. They are not to be applied to that fence. Off the staggered offset fence design.
That's correct.
Uh, Nick Missione, do you have any questions or comments? Questions?
A quick question, I, I'm, I'm not sure if this has already been figured out or not, uh, but is the intent to retain all stormwater on the lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
On that note, the, um. The bio retention areas, do those double as functional play space, social space? Or are they solely to be used for, I guess, is, is the grading such that? Uh, it cannot be used socially or otherwise?
Let me say that again, just, just so I'm clear.
Yeah, so the bio retention areas in the main social courtyard.
Yeah, so they're, um, they, the main purpose is for retention, but I think, I guess Brandy might be able to comment too. I think those. Could potentially be usable space too.
Okay.
To run through or play, you know, throw a frisbee through, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Uh, actually, I just wanted to build on top of that as well, um, just because. Uh. So let's see, I'm trying to look for it. The, in regards to how much open space, public open space that we're supposed to have. Is that being included within that number or is that? Not being included with that number?
So the requirement in this case is for private common area. And it, private common areas include the, uh, the retention areas.
Okay.
So what is the slope of those retention areas?
They're. Like four or five to one on the edge.
Okay, then it.
It's not like a straight drop off.
Okay.
They're pretty depressed, they're going to be only two, three feet deep total.
Got it.
Yeah, so the, there are also dry wells underneath those. That a lot of the detention volume and retention volume will come from.
Got it.
Nicholas, a good page to see the topography is page sixty-nine of our packet. It's a green, pretty nice.
I mean, with that, I, I feel like, uh. I'm trying to think of projects that we've had in the past where retention areas were within that. Private open space. You know, in the past, that's always been like, like in. What is it? Lot one over in the marketplace, I understand that there was the detention underneath the. Playing field, but it was actually still just a playing field. I can't think of any project where we've had.
So in actual, there is a, a slope that goes down to, uh, the retention area, but it's got a sod on it.
Right.
So it, it appears. The underground facility is, is where all of the percolation is.
Totally.
But it is the bio retention area also.
If I, I love the idea and the approach, so I definitely applaud the. The overlap in uses and functionality. Um, super efficient. And dirty nature play perhaps in the process as well. Quick side question, your shade study only shows building. B and C is, um. Does A not? Provide shade?
It just doesn't butt up against any, um, property lines.
Oh, so you just, you just weren't showing it because of the impact on that northeast. Okay, got it, thanks.
If I could just follow up with one more question, Jay. Jay. Has anybody done a study as to whether the surrounding lots are draining onto this lot?
The surrounding, you mean the ball fields?
Yeah. I guess the, yeah, in particular.
Yeah, the, the thing that, uh. That we were most focused on is the yellow ditch. Uh, the, the, uh, grading for the, the ball fields, we, that, that isn't an issue.
It's two percent across.
We need all the codes for detention, but the, um, we did a hundred year study, Nick, where. Um, our, our site will allow water to flow through in the road corridors to get onto Meadowwood through our site without impact to the buildings. So we did, we did look at those tributary basins above it. Um, from the ball fields and then the yellow ditch is essentially a cutoff for anything above there, but our site has the. Ability in the road corridors to pass those hundred year flood events, um, through the site down to Meadowwood.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Kyle, actually, while you're still up, I had one more question for you. Um, I saw that your stormwater detention was for, uh, ten year, one hour. And, uh, I guess I just wanted to check and see, uh, just. Given that we have storms that are larger than a ten year, one hour, is there, uh, flow pattern to where it's not going to damage any of the buildings on the site?
Yeah, in, in Carbon Hill, as a lot of us know, we get these bigs, big cloud bursts that, um. Have a lot of volume really fast and that's what you'll see in your curbs, uh, where that volume is really. Um, carrying the water in those shorter events with a lot of volume. So. That ten hour, one, or I'm sorry, ten year, one hour storm, the intensity. Versus like a twenty-five year, twenty-four hour, um, storm are, are actually fairly similar. So we looked at a lot of those hundred year, one hour storm event. And, um, it, the volumes there, the retention volumes there, and then, um, like I said, it, any of those. Storms that exceed the volume can safely pass through the site onto Meadowwood.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, my, my report has, it, it's a little cumbersome, but there are, um. Some calculations for ten and twenty-five year storm events in there and then the hundred year for passing through. So, yeah, we did look at all those.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Um, Jeff, I heard you kind of pop up a bit ago, did you have? Something, uh, a question?
Yeah, maybe just one quick question, Bob, is you mentioned, uh. You guys have planned for solar in the future, can you give me a little bit more detail? Is that just? Uh, loading and, and how you're building these buildings or? Has, has any more study gone into what? The potential solar can provide for this all-electric building?
Only making sure that we have some flat, uh, roof areas that weren't occupied by, uh, heat pumps that would. Uh, would be able to take care of. Uh, solar, the other thing Jeff mentioned was. Some wall areas in case batteries came into play sometime in the future and we've got some of that. Particularly on building C in that, uh. In that tuck under parking area, so, uh. Yeah, if that comes to pass, there's some opportunities, it won't be a hundred percent, you. We wouldn't be able to do, uh, a hundred percent of the solar on the site.
And I, I know you mentioned also the, uh, covered parking hasn't quite been funded for phase one, but you're also exploring. Potential for solar covered parking. Great. Thanks.
Still my question.
Any questions?
I don't have anything, I think it's a great report and, um, it's an exciting project. I have lots of questions about the construction of it. Nothing to do with.
Awesome, thanks, Jess. Uh, sorry, Jared. Did you have one more question?
Uh, I was just telling Jeff he still my question. I was very curious about that too, if we were mounting them on the slopes or on the flats and, uh, Bob, you, you also read my mind, so.
All right, um, I did have one more question, I just wanted to ask about, uh. You know, the access road that goes through to the high school. I understand that these are both owned by. The school district, but isn't it, um, do we want to? Have a street easement, uh, for like legal access over to, uh, the other lot? Is that something that we need to consider in this?
Yeah, when we get to the, the actual final plat version of, of the minor plat amendment. Kyle has a list of easements that we're gonna add to the site and we talked to Kevin about those and. When we get to the version of it that Jared would be asked to sign. Uh, everybody will have signed off on that easement scheme. Just for now, purposes is just to show the lot line change.
Yeah, yeah, it would have, would have been really busy if you were showing that on there too, but. Understand, I just want to make sure, okay. With that, any more questions? All right, then, uh, given that, let's open it up to, uh, public comment. So if anybody in the public. Uh, has something that you would like to say to the commissioners, uh, if you could please step up to the podium, um, and, uh. And also, before you speak, if you could say your name and your address.
Yo soy Hilda Ramirez.
My name is Hilda Ramirez.
Y vivo en el cuatro setenta y dos al norte de La Ocho.
I live four seventy, uh, north. Eight, eight street.
Y he vivido aqui por treinta años.
I've lived here for thirty years.
Quisiera saber si estos, este employ housing va a tener suficiente parqueadero porque en el Meadowwood. Ya estamos teniendo problemas con el parqueadero.
I'd like to know if we will have enough parking in this new development because in Meadowwood, we already have issues with parking.
Y cada unidad tiene dos parqueaderos y uno de contejo.
And each unit has two parkings and one with, uh, and one carport.
Y no es suficiente.
And it's not enough.
Tenemos que usar el de la calle.
We have to use the, the street.
Si estos, este employ housing no va a tener suficiente parqueadero, nos vamos a ver, ver afectados.
If this new development doesn't have enough parking, we, we will be affected.
También quisiera hacerles un comentario que a la mejor no lo van a tomar en cuenta.
I'd like to make a comment that you may or may not take into account. I'd like to make a comment that you may or may not take into account.
Pero oigo mencionar que construyen aquí, construyen allá y construyen por todo alrededor. Pero no se han puesto a pensar que solamente hay una carretera hacia Aspen.
But I see that you're building here and there and around, but have you thought that there's only one road to Aspen?
Y nos está tomando hasta una hora y media para llegar allá de tanta gente que hay.
And it's taking us an hour and a half to get there because of traffic and the amount of people.
Me gustaría que tomen en cuenta la forma de. No estoy en contra de que sigan haciendo más edificios.
I'm I'm not against new buildings or new housing.
Pero me gustaría que también tomen en cuenta la ciudad de Carbondale.
But I'd like you to take into account the town of Carbondale.
Que puedan hacer algo para solu- solucionar esto porque nos está tomando mucho tiempo para llegar a nuestros trabajos.
Because it's taking us a very long time to get to our job sites.
Todas las mañanas. No podemos. Rebasar ni pasar nada porque van los dos carriles. Llenos de carros.
E- every morning, there's no way to go around uh, or pass it, pass the lines of cars because both lanes are full. Bumper to bumper.
Mm-hmm. Y me gustaría que tomen en cuenta eso, tanto las personas, la la comunidad del town de Carbondale, los que dirigen la ciudad. Como los que están queriendo construir.
And I would like both the town and and the applicants to take this into account.
Les agradezco que me hayan escuchado.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much.
Um, let's see, do we have anybody else in the in the call for public comment? No. Okay, um. Let's see, uh. Would anybody be able to close the uh, public comment for me?
Oh, yeah. Motion to close of a comment.
In a second.
Second.
Sorry, who said that?
Jared.
Oh, okay, thanks Jared. Um, okay, well, uh, awesome, I guess now it's opened up to the commissioners um, for discussion.
I guess just in response to the the comment about parking, I I think. Since there is a, uh, you know, we are down three spaces. Possibly seven, if my math is correct, roughly. Napkin math. I think it is, um, and based on the 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 comment for, you know, from local living, um, I I too, you know, I think. For a small community, I think we've all spent some time over there, since there's, you know, parking is a situation for sure in Meadowwood. Um. I guess my first question, and I'm just kind of just scrolling through this, so I'm I'm wondering. Maybe this would have been better as a question, um, but I'm wondering about, will parking spaces be? Tagged, will there be like a, you know, uh, help me here, um, thank you, designated spaces. Uh, is it a free for all scenario, um, or is it just like? Maybe, can we ask that question, can you clarify how that would work?
I haven't been a part of any discussions about the parking assignment, um, you know, we're kind of. Here and. That question is one that becomes ripe when you're ready to operate. At Third Street, we haven't had um. Had to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And um, there's. On a typical day, there's there's spaces left. With parking. People will fill them, you know, if there's a parking space.
Mm-hmm.
Go buy a camper and. So uh, what gives me comfort about the parking situation in in this? Particular location is. That lot, and um, so if somebody does have a camper or something, or. Or we need an overflow, we have a, we have a place to to put that. Um.
With the lot to the north?
Uh, right in the center of this drawing.
For the high school.
Oh, okay.
There's a hundred and fifty plus spaces in that lot. And uh, it gets used about. Hundred and eighty days a year for six hours a day, and we we've paved an acre and a half of land to do that.
Yep.
Uh, I I do think uh. You know, I play pickleball, so. I'm part of the Meadowwood uh, parking situation at times. Uh, the pickleballers are out on the street there, and then at night, uh, there's some cars that are. Are uh, parked there from, I don't know where people live. But they're there at night, so presumably they live somewhere in that area.
So I guess potentials are, we see more. Parking on Meadowwood itself, which which occurs. Um, overflow could happen into the gravel lot to the north. Um, which is a kind of easy picking adjacency. Um. I'm just.
Yeah, no, and.
The least thing about this is we have a uh, a set. You know, the client set is known. Uh, they live there, they have a lease with the school district, they work for the school district, so if we needed to communicate about. You know, use this lot. Rather than Meadowwood, we know who we need to talk to, as opposed to, you know, Carbondale South or. Or the Villas or something that that might be more difficult to track down.
Sure.
So I guess, given that um. You know, the ownership of the. Lot in the the middle of the screen that you're showing up there for the high school, since that's same ownership as this development itself, I mean, could it be a requirement within? Uh. Within the lease agreements or something that all overflow parking would occur? In that parking lot as opposed to more parking along Meadowwood? Um, in in a way to kind of uh, compromise with those three parking spaces, I suppose. Is. Do we, do we see any opportunity there?
You know, it it's. It's up to. It it would be up to the applicant to determine, you know, if they want to provide some sort of condition within their leases. For that, um, you know, as I put in the staff report, you know, I think one of the unique. Situations of this application as opposed to other applications is. The uh. The common ownership of lots two A and two B, as well as the proximity and existence of the large parking lot, so. You know, a condition of. Approval could be placed. Dictating that, I think, you know, in reality, enforcement of that condition would fall. Onto the school district to say, you know, here's how we we choose to. To police that and enforce that, I think that. It it could be tough for the town to. Enforce that type of a.
Mm-hmm.
Requirement.
And let's be honest, no one's gonna walk up the hill. Five times, ten times as far.
Right.
When there's a gravel lot or a. A a street spot.
It's all public parking.
It's all public parking.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in reality is reality, I think, it's just human nature.
Right. And I mean, also a big part of this too is, you know, those parking spaces. Along that stretch, I mean, I feel like they're almost always full. It's like.
Yeah.
If. I don't know, it's that people fight for those spots right there.
Totally.
And so.
Right.
They're either gonna be full, or they're gonna be full with other people, I don't know, it's.
And I guess I go back to where you opened Jared, that, I mean, on one hand, three spaces is three spaces, and I think we're all trying to find. You know, as planners, architects, you know, we're all trying to find like this, this this way to the future where we realize we don't need. Five million spaces per unit per, you know, residents, I think. Except for Bob, I know Bob loves his parking spaces. Uh. Um, for pickleball, um. And yet. Opening statement was the slippery slope, the precedent being set. So I'm just trying to be thoughtful and kind of just careful in this moment, especially given, uh, you know, the thoughtful comments. Um. Just wanting to spend a second on it.
Yeah.
Um, so just just pin this one first. Perhaps this is like. The one that actually honestly, like beyond this. Everything really feels really good, so. Um.
I have a question.
Were you using a drainage basin for playing or? Sweet. Sorry. Um, so, I mean, let's just figure this one out, kind of, if we could somehow. Like makes everybody happy.
I would, I would direct the committee, were we in deliberation right now, is that where we're at?
Yep, yeah, talking.
So I would direct the committee to uh, page twenty-five of one thirty-eight, findings for approval, alternative compliance parking reduction. Um. Number four, the reduced parking requirement imposes no greater impacts on adjacent. Properties then would occur through compliance. With the specific requirements. Of this ordinance as the RFSD can accommodate overflow parking on the adjacent surface slot. But we're hearing a member of the public. Come forth and say that that is not the case. So. How do we address this?
Well, I mean, I I feel like a big part of this is that it's a lot of existing conditions in that area, I mean, there's a lot of high density right there and. That's a lot of the time, especially with older developments, uh, that probably didn't have the. Parking standards that we have now, um, because of that, there's. Kind of already not enough parking in that area.
Right.
And.
Right, but but no, but let's ta- let's talk about what's written down in the document, the reduced parking requirement imposes no greater impacts on adjacent properties. Um, I'm hearing that that's not the case.
Wait, I'm I'm.
I mean, it's all theoretical, I don't know if it is.
Yeah, I don't really know what you're getting at here, Nick.
Well, what I'm getting at is what we just heard, right, we heard a member of the public who lives in the neighborhood. Right, a neighboring who lives on a neighboring property, on an adjacent property. Who's saying that? This is gonna be an impact. We don't live in that, I mean, we don't do any, do any of these, does anybody in this room right now live on an adjacent property?
No, but I think some of us frequent this area quite often.
But we don't live there.
Did the member of the public say that they lived in that neighborhood? Or was their address somewhere else? But I thought they said North Eight Street, is that North?
That's a good point, so maybe she doesn't live there.
That is exactly correct, it was North East.
Okay. Son lives there, okay.
Just clarifying.
Well, that's a good point, she doesn't live there either, so who is she speaking for?
Her son.
Her son.
Her son.
Her son, okay.
I I think Jay made a good point, I think there's a. A a lot of what happened in Santa Lucia and Meadowwood was a different paradigm. Um, I think Roaring Fork Ave is a a vehicle collector. There are a lot of projects, we'll call them, out in that area. Um. That just, you know, a lot of sports happens over there, those of us with kids, I don't personally, I can speak to you how. The impacts can stack up very. Um. I don't wanna, I don't want this to kind of. Also blow out of. Talking about three spaces, possibly seven. Um, per code, let's not lose sight of of that.
Can you unpack the possibly seven for me, Nick, what where's, what's that reference?
Uh, yeah, Jeff, if the um, if if in three years, the covered parking does not take shape. Um, then the the three, I'm sorry, four landscaped islands would need to be installed, which would roughly. Uh, take away four parking spaces from that stretch on the northeast alignment of the property, which abuts the gravel parking area.
Okay, thanks for that.
Napkin math.
I mean, I, I appreciate your pointing out the language in um, the findings for approval, Nick. Cause I think at the very least, we can say. There's an impact of three extra cars on the public street when. This project's lot is full. Um, and possibly seven. I mean, if we could, if we would try to quantify it in some way, maybe the question is then for Jared to how that finding was uh. Was included, I mean. I would, I would also like to minimize the fact that three spots doesn't feel like a lot, but. Um. It it's quantifiable.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Is it possible to put it in in as a requirement in three years that those seven spots get put in? On the street, on the high school access street?
Oh, so if if.
If they don't do the covered parking.
It triggers it, then they all gonna.
Then they have to then do the seven spots on the street too.
It's a great backup plan, yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah. Um, as for. Who, so that the town owns the parking, the gravel parking lot, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Um, a lot of the, I mean. I've, it's very rare that I go in there and I see that parking lot. Being fully utilized, correct, and so it's. Interesting that the street is always packed because that parking lot is usually empty.
It's funny, isn't it?
Hmm.
I I guess.
Yeah. I almost wonder if if we add these spaces on that street, like those might fill up with cars before North Face lot.
Where do you see?
Sorry Jared, repeat that one, one more time?
Sorry, um, I'm just saying like, if we add those parking spots on the street, I just wonder if those will fill up before. Parking in North Face, I almost never see anybody in that lot, but that street is always. Action packed.
That's what we were just saying, yeah.
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 Yeah, yeah.
I I I guess there's a tipping point though, I guess if I'm looking into a a created crystal ball. I kind of like the people that 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 park is, that parking lot, the gravel parking lot is respectfully used.
Mm-hmm.
That we don't see. Van life, you know. Creating a. Kind of a housing community over there, and it's 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 used for events and then it's. It's vacated at night.
Yeah.
Um. Nothing against van life, anyway.
This is a bit of a tangent, so I apologize, um, I was appreciating uh, the. Correspondence with Rafa. The applicant took here and I just noticed, like, most of that conversation was centered on. We cycles, Jay, if you don't mind, I might direct to Bob. On whether there was any conversation around. Additional public transport support, um, I mean, especially knowing that this is our, a high. Density residential area furthest from. Our public transport um, stations. And I am aware of how difficult this agreement between the town and Rafa is with the circulator, but. Uh, did it come up, Bob?
Hey, if I missed your, the essence of your question, interrupt me. But I thought what you were saying is, have we thought about uh, transit?
Yeah, more or less.
So, so the the people who, uh, not every person that lives here will work on a Carbondale school. But a lot of them will, and um. So. All of the Carbondale schools are. You know. Maybe not golf ball range, but not too far, uh. Where there isn't really a a a need for for transit, there's. Uh. There's bike connectivity that's really. Great on that trail that goes uh. Behind the Crystal River Elementary and Orchard and connects into town and then the. The trail that that goes along uh, Highway one thirty-three. Now we're gonna have a we cycle station out there. There's been some conversation, uh, the town's gonna do a transportation study, there's been conversation over the years about. Should the circulator loop out to this area that was in the absence of this project, but uh, that was a. A conversation item. Uh, but we certainly uh, for fifty units aren't planning on building a transit system. But but there are a lot of ways for people to get around, in addition to their private uh, automobile. Uh, including down to the raft of parking right, but. Uh, the response to the the comment that was brought forward. Uh, so this is for people who work in the schools in Basalt. Carbondale and Glenwood Springs, as opposed to the Aspen schools. So most of the people that would be living here. Uh, might be going to Aspen to ski or something, but in terms of uh. The employees that work for the school district, they um, they wouldn't need to go on a routine basis. To Aspen for for work. I don't know whether I got there, Jeff, but.
No, thanks, I mean, I knew you guys must have put some thought into it, what I'm, what I'm hearing is a. Fifty unit development doesn't necessarily tip the scale for for this neighborhood, especially considering. That most, most if not all of the residents will be. Um, Carbondale based and at at furthest Glenwood and and Basalt, but. I mean, I'm glad you're thinking about any opportunities to get cars off the road and I feel like. It's another good opportunity, it's another good chance to talk about Carbondale's lack of public transport, especially in these high density residential areas.
Yeah, the challenge there is the circulator route, uh, I haven't priced it recently, but. It's over half a million dollars a year in operating costs and. Um. That's where we always bump up into. Uh, we don't generate that much with the current. Uh, we don't generate that much with the current raft attacks here in Carbondale. So.
Yeah, I understand.
Where do we, how do we fund that? In addition to the existing circulator route, add another one or a longer one or more service. That would loop up through Meadowwood.
Yeah, well, thanks for the info.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. And yeah, I hopefully we'll be. Tackling that a little bit more once we hear a little bit more from that uh. Transportation master plan, um, cause yeah, I think that'll kind of give us a lot more direction and. A little bit more feedback as to what we need to do. For public trans transit around town. Um.
Sorry, if I'm kind of on a roll, sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
In response to.
Discussion, are we letting that pause for?
No, I'm I'm gonna bring that back up. Thank you, that's all right. Um, could in in reference to the findings for approval number four. Is there? Is there an opportunity to clarify the public nature of that gravel lot? I mean, does that come into play if we are determining that the reduced parking requirement imposes no greater risk or no, um, no greater impact rather? Can we reference the town owned lot? As a reason why we're making that determination?
So the uh, elements between this property and that gravel parking lot. And um. I I just, I don't see. People. Choosing that as a location where they would. Where they would park. I don't know why people who are. Parking in the public right of way today aren't using that lot. I've never really. Thought about that or looked into it, but uh. You know, if I lived there and I had an extra car, let's say I was a teacher. Uh, in the school district and did need to drive it very often, it wouldn't be uh. I would feel. More secure having it in the district's parking lot than in the gravel lot and having to navigate the. Around the ditch to get to my home.
If if I can add to that. The the U D C um. Generally speaking, does not permit. Private developments. Parking obligations to be satisfied with. Public infrastructure and so um, I would feel very hesitant about. Um, the Planning Zoning Commission. Including in the finding, the availability of. Public parking lots to satisfy private parking needs. And so that's part of the reason why finding four was drafted to highlight the um, existence of the. Private parking lot that. The school district owns. Um, you know, I think in reality. We all know people will probably park where they're gonna park and that could be. On Meadowwood, that could be in that parking lot and the school district could do the uh. The the best job they can to encourage and. Demand and incentivize their um. Their residents parking in that school district parking lot, but you know, we could see some spillover parking in. Town owned lots. I just, I I just don't, I I wouldn't recommend that the commission. Include that as part of the findings.
Was Jeff recommending that? That we were saying, Jeff?
Just posing a question. But I think it was a good answer. Thanks, Jared.
Repurposed for other recreation uses and.
Yeah, so. So let's not go down that road.
Yes.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to, you know, I I I mean, your your point is well taken, Nick. Uh, you know, I don't think that seven parking spaces should. Ice this project.
No.
Um, I don't think anybody's saying that. Um, but we would be remiss if we didn't address. You know. The parking issue. Um.
Just to be clear, we're talking about three spaces. The seven is a hypothetical that. Uh, you know. We're tight, we're, our request is for three spaces.
Well, yes, but to be fair, though, that you. Open say you can't build the structure. So until like that goes in, I mean, I guess we have to be. Like the clean math is to say that there's. That there would be seven. I I hear you, Bob. I mean, respectfully, it's since that, since you are being honest and saying you can't build the shade structure. I'm just. There is like, this is an amazing project. I think. I'll speak for myself, I'm super impressed with everything. This feels like the one little thing that we're trying to get off right now and just. So it, if anything, I'm just trying to be super honest about the one thing. The the shade structure will not be here. Hopefully within three years that will be and then those four will be boom tucked in, great. No, you know, we're all good and we can move on. But I guess until that happens. The clean math, if I can, would say that there are seven. Until it comes, until the the shade comes. And if there's, if we are already acknowledging that there is a parking situation, I think we're all trying to find a way that we can. You know, in a community that is on the precipice of parking reform. And looking to that. Kind of that that bright horizon, you know, how do we make? Part two of an amazing part one project. You know, shine super, super bright. I think that's who's, that's my perspective right now is seeing one tiny little dot. And trying to buff it up. Cause it's three or seven, neither one of them really to me is insurmountable. It's it's just about um, just putting this thing to bed, because again, I'm just. Massively impressed with the entire team with what you've done. It's a beautiful project. And I'm grateful to have it in our town. We're grateful to possibly, you know, to look forward to it being in our town. Um, so I don't, I'm not really sure, you know, what to be said, but I just wanted to hit the nail on the head. There was public comment that what went to it and so that was really the intention of. It being brought up.
I'm wondering if maybe it would be a good time to just go around and and just kind of. Take a feeler on everybody on if they're okay with moving forward with just the ninety or if they want to come up with more of a solution. Does that sound good to you guys?
Is, I just have one question.
Sure.
There a way to change the wording of four where it doesn't say imposes no greater impacts on adjacent properties? Because we're talking right now about the fact that it is. That it could. Pose an impact.
Right.
Right, and then we need to look at three too, right? Because three says reduced parking requirement results in benefits to the community that exceed benefits associated with the subject standard. Not sure that that's true either.
So uh, one through four are um, largely based on required findings. That the Planning Zoning Commission has to make in order to prove approve a alternative compliance. Um, the changes to the exact language is um. For the purposes of discussing the. Exact request, the reduced parking requirement. And then at the end, I tried to include a rationale. For. Why? The alternative request mitigates that and so just to answer your question directly. Yes, you have to make a finding that no greater. Impacts on adjacent properties. You you have to make that and so I I tried to draft up. Some initial finding that says, but. But here's that mitigating circumstances to why. There is no greater impact and and same with three, you know. The the benefits and 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 I'll be frank, I I struggled when writing um. The ones for the parking reduction. Um, I I don't think the findings for the other ones were nearly as hard, but the. The parking direction is is difficult and so I I would encourage. The planning commission, if you are gonna move forward with that um. Alternative compliance to. To to feel free to rewrite and change those and find and include other um, mitigating factors in the findings.
Yeah, and I I would just like to point out too that uh, I. I actually don't have any issues with the wording because. The right of way isn't necessarily on. A property that's a public right of way. It's not impacting the neighboring. Complexes. But even if it was impacting anything, it would be impacting the street, which is public right of way. It's not a property.
Right.
So. Um, because of that. I'm okay with the wording.
Okay, good point.
Okay. Jason, I'm, uh, Jay, I'm good with your idea. If you want to go around the room, I think that's a great idea.
Sure, Nick, you want to start?
Oh.
There you go.
Um, thanks for volunteering.
So I don't want to belabor this, but I am a little bit mindful of the fact that, you know, this. This language in three and four in particular um. Is 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 causing some. A situation that 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 alternative compliance is not approvable. Um, only because that we are confined by the U D C. Uh, and constrained by the provisions of the U D C. We live and die by the U D C and if this is. If this is what we're gonna hang our hats on, then we need to do a better job with three and four. From that, I I don't have any issues. I don't have any, I mean, it's a great project. Um. I certainly don't want to ice the project because of three or seven. You know. Parking spaces that seems. Nevertheless, we have to find some way to. You know, um. Reconcile this. Uh, three and four in particular, in my view.
Okay, um. Jeff, what are your thoughts?
Might be bedtime.
I like your uh. I like your justification of language in in four on the parking reduction, Jay. I appreciate that. The impact is to the public right of way. And I actually have no problem with number three and the alternative compliance for parking reduction. I do think that. This is special project workforce housing for our school district and. Where the location is and. In proximity to workplaces. Is for me. Uh, a benefit to the community that would meet. Our alternative compliance. Standards. Uh, I do think the private outdoor space alternative compliance is a is a slam dunk and. If we were being sticklers. And there's a plan to add three spots on the high school access road. I, I think that's an easy uh, recommendation and we could, we could kick it to the. To the trustees to make the final final determination, but that's only because I agree with Nick. We live and buy. We live and die by these quasi judicial rules of the U D C and um. Yeah, that's my two cents at this point.
Awesome, thanks, Jeff. Um, Jared?
Fix my mic, so hopefully you guys can hear me better. Um, I see no problem with three. Um, or. Uh, I think I'm with Jeff on this one, I. I don't know. I don't think it really works um, the way it's written. Um. I would like to see those extra three.
What if, what, can I just say that maybe if we rewarded three that said the reduced parking requirement? Um, is superseded by the benefits associated with the subject standard? Because what it says now is that the reduced parking requirement results in benefits to the community, which is just. I mean, it doesn't sound to me like that's the case, but. The benefits of the project supersede. The reduced parking. Burden. On the community. You know what I mean? Like, reduced parking requirement results in benefits. Is not true. But the project benefits supersede the reduced parking requirement. Am I making any sense?
That makes sense to me.
I'm sorry, I lost the page that we're on. What page are we looking at?
Twenty five of one thirty eight.
There's a lot of number fours on here.
For approval, alternative compliance. You know, that we're that we're hung up on.
Yeah, no, sorry, I just. Scrolled away and I couldn't find it again. Um.
It's just not worded exactly in the way that I think we could prove it. Uh, we can, we can just massage it a little bit and I think we'd be there.
Jay, is it appropriate if I say anything?
Sure, yeah, go for it, please.
The reason why the 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 spaces, if we have to build three more there is. And the reason why we don't have ninety three on the site is to protect that common area. And in this case, the the client is the public. So from my perspective, I was thinking at least, and perhaps I was wrong headed that. Uh, if the, if we had a better project because we had a better common area. And uh, the resources to enhance that. Then we were benefiting the public because. This is the public's project. The money that's being used here is. Is the public's and the people who live here work for the public and uh. To me, it would be no difference than if it was the town. Uh, building this this project. Uh, at the same time, if we can't. The reason why we prepared this drawing is to say. Okay, if you can't live with that, we'll move resources from the common area and we'll build these three spaces if. If that's the most important, we told you what we think is most important and and if you disagree, we're prepared, we'll, we'll go. Draw this up and build it.
I I for one, don't disagree, Bob. I I'm just thinking that this. Three, I think that the common area and the project in in general as designed. You know, those, the benefits of how it's designed supersede. The parking requirement, the reduced parking requirement.
I would say. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 please, go ahead. I'm done.
I would say that the reduced parking requirement does result in benefits to the community. By not. Affecting the common area. We're reducing the parking requirement, which is resulting in a benefit. Of of a better common area. Which is. The the community. And it exceeds benefits associated with the subject standard. It, I think it's true. The way it's written.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay.
And I think by locating the Roaring Fork School District housing close to. The Roaring Fork School District employment, like if there are teachers in the housing that work at. The high school, they can walk. Crystal River, they're probably walking unless they have. A lot to carry, which usually teachers do. Um.
The way to the world.
Yeah. I just, I think if I, if I frame it like that, that I'm reducing the parking requirement. And it results in benefit. It's true. But that's just my thought.
That's great, thank you.
Um, sorry, so Nick, did you, are you? Are you okay with settling for the ninety or or are you pushing for the ninety three?
I'm okay settling with the ninety.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Jared, we have.
Jared and Jeff, they both want the ninety three.
Okay.
Um. Unless that changes, please speak up and then Jess is. For just the ninety. Same with Nick. Nicholas.
Um. Want to be really unsophisticated here, not so fancy. In my mind. I would just kick this kid on the road. If there's an issue. I think there's something we could do in the language here that says. You have space there for three. Possibly seven. Sorry, sorry, semantics. Um. I want to see that common area be everything it can be, everything it's supposed to be. I think it's awesome. The idea, the concept. Like, everything you've done has been fantastic. I want to see it go. So. I don't want to see three parking spots or anything else get in the way. There is that space. I think there is perhaps a a review. We have three years to get the shaded parking in. Perhaps over that time, we look and see what has happened. You know, if all of a sudden there are campers filling the the parking lots and the cars are all sitting on the outside. We have a problem, right? And that that's, then then we're setting a bad precedent for the community where we're trying to fix things. And be more, you know, I I think share more rather than take more. So in my mind. I I would, you know. That's why I say it's is like just kicking the can so that so sorry, it's not a cleaner solution. But I guess I align with. We know there's space. We know that you have the space if need be. Um, I would rather. Um. Wait and see, I guess, is that?
Yeah.
It's messy, but that's what I got. Okay.
So you're good with ninety for now?
I'm good with ninety for now, yeah. Um, I'm, my, my only concern is the precedent we're setting and there's a certain level of subjectivity to this. That's, I, I, I think what makes, you know, I, I think it's easy to say that this is a good project for community. It's, it's serving schools, it's serving kids and it's, it's very, very easy to get behind. Um, someday it might not be so easy and it might be referenced. I'm, I'm not going to play that crystal ball game. I'm just going to warn us all that, you know, that those things may come. So, so yes, ninety. I'm okay.
Um, I guess building off of what you were just mentioning, I, I think this is an okay position to be setting that precedent of where we will grant a variance because this is a great project. It's what our community needs. Um, it's really important and, you know, I'm all right with making agreements like this for projects like this. Sure, it's there for the projects that we don't feel as good about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I feel good about this project and I don't want three parking spaces that are, you know, just some written number in our code. Like, there's a rea, there's a reason for them, but at the same time, there's times like right now that are okay to be flexible and that's kind of how I stand on it. So.
Stand, nice. Good.
Yeah.
Do you?
I also just want to point out that if they create seven spaces on that high school access drive, who's to say that those don't get filled up by people who don't live at that
Totally.
housing area. So then you just are still in the same, still the same problem.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Okay, so I think that settles the the parking topic, right?
I think so.
Seems like we're.
Are we buttoned here, Jared?
Do you want to change your motion?
Okay. So, um, from, from what I'm hearing, I would recommend maybe modifying the findings to include some of the topics that were discussed and I've got a few thoughts based on what I heard you all say. Um.
Is that, sorry, Jared, if we had to go back and modify any language with that delay of construction start?
Uh, of a recommended motion?
Yeah.
No.
The trucks are ready right now. Hurry up, we're losing minutes.
Hey, listen, listen, I know, this, these things happen, you know, like I just, you don't want it to lay a construction start. I don't know.
I'm his money.
So, I, I think two, two options exist. You guys could massage the language tonight. Um, or, um, staff could come back with a clean, uh, motion at your next meeting. And the, uh, formal motion could be made at the next meeting.
So a two-week impact.
A two-week impact, but so, so it, so ju- jumping, jumping ahead, um, the, uh, in order to kind of keep, in order to try to keep this project on track, um, staff and the applicant work together to publicly notice the board of trustees meeting for, um, for, uh, March twenty-eighth. I'm gonna read the calendar and learn to speak eventually, um, for March twenty-eighth. So, um, the planning zoning commission will meet one more time before that meeting. Um, so if, if all we're doing is finalizing the specific language of a motion, I don't believe there would be any delay to having that hearing still occur on the twenty-eighth. So to answer your question, Nick, no, I don't think there would be any delay. Um, if the planning zoning commission does not feel comfortable with the design and it's more than just fine tuning the specific motion that's being made, then that could delay the plan or the board of trustees review of the, um, comprehensive application, combined application.
Jared, did you have, I thought you were going towards you some notes about an alternative finding?
So with that being said, I did have a couple notes on an alternative finding. We could revise finding number three. State the reduced parking requirement results in benefits to the community that exceeds benefits associated with the subject standard by increasing private common area, comma, locating Roaring Fork School District housing close to Roaring Fork School District employment and increasing access to alternative transportation opportunities. And I think that captures Jess's, um, additional mitigating factor that it seemed like everyone was in support of or the majority were in support of. And then modifying finding number four to state that the reduced parking requirement imposes no greater impacts on adjacent properties than would occur through compliance with the specific requirement of this ordinance as the Roaring Fork School District can accommodate overflow parking on the adjacent surface lot and alternative designs for parking along the high school access road exist if issues arise. I think if you want to include that additional finding to four, I would also recommend that a condition be added in the motion to tie how we check on if issues arise. So to what you were saying, do you tie an analysis to that three-year trigger point with the, um, with the covered parking to say, well, we'll look at both of these items within three years. If the covered parking is built and there's no issues, parking is satisfied. If issues exist and/or the covered parking isn't built, then we will address the three or seven parking spaces.
Yep.
Three or whatever the end result is, um, at that time. So I think that could be a motion, a amended condition and some amended findings that could kind of capture the conversation you guys were having.
I like all of it. The only thing that I would maybe suggest is, to me, adjacent lot is the gravel lot. I don't read the lot down the road, take a right through the gate as the adjacent lot, perhaps just like school, adjacent school owned lot.
Yeah.
Just so we're confirming what is, that that is.
Yeah.
Works. Otherwise, I thought everything was just great. Analysis sounds like a fancy thing to add in there. I don't know who's going to pay for that or what that, what that looks like. But, uh.
Is there a way to, to not have this go to the next meeting?
Yeah, you guys can make a motion.
Like saying what you just said?
Sure. We could, we could pause for five minutes if you guys so choose and we could probably draft up a slightly modified condition for someone to read to the record. If, if that's what you guys would, would like to do.
Personally, I'm into, I'm into that and just getting it done because who knows, next meeting, we might not even, I don't know, we've, sorry, what? We might not even have a.
I'm going on vacation, so. Gentlemen online, Jeff, uh, Jared, Nick. Are you guys in favor or willing to, uh, bang this thing out in support of this project this evening? Do you feel, how do you all feel?
I, I would be ready to make a motion in five minutes or to entertain a motion in five minutes with that modified language on three and four.
Hey, Nick, Jeff.
Yeah, I really appreciate creativity. Jared's saying, I think that, um, that would help. Bob, Bob will have to explain to me how the three spaces affect the public uh, courtyard at some other time, but I, I know how much effort has gone into getting to this point in the project and it is a great project worthy of approval in my opinion.
Agreed.
Jared also, okay, so let's just do this thing.
Yeah. Um, Nick, I heard you mention something about, uh, I think the, the wording was for number three and it was, I think, was it the reduced parking requirements result in benefits to the community that offset?
That exceed or supersede. I think, uh, Jared was saying exceed, which is just as good, probably better than supersede. Supersedes a mouthful.
Okay.
But you're usually such a succinct.
Me? I'm not.
You. So we take five minutes and is that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sweet.
Well, is there a dirty type? Please.
Fresh.
Do the jeopardy. Is it that how we say welcome to Carbondale? He give you that? Awesome. So Bob, were you saying though, your point was that, that there, like the financial resources would be pulled to pay for those? So like they so are they, are we crossing the line by just chatting about this now?
I don't.
No, the report.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, I prefer to have that conversation.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I too like Jeff, I wanted to drill into that one. I thought that was.
Cool.
Yeah.
Jeff, we can't hear you.
I, I can withdraw my inquiry. I'm eavesdropping and I do, I, I hear you, Bob. It's financial. So like landscaping, um, or, you know, amenities would be redirected to build parking. Is that correct?
All right, Jeff, I think we're going to hold discussion until we're back together after the five minutes. I think that's why Bob is not responding.
Smart man.
Yeah.
Six.
Put it forward. So. Hey.
That finish line here is, I think, eight inches higher than that. So we could take a, there was another basis right here. It's, it's all and then that's all getting into this part here. It can overflow into this part here and then filtration. To drain the same. So that's why. Passing all that. Uh, I was wondering if our draining out into So we're, we're showing, we're collecting.
Yeah.
Including the additional water that they're creating. But I played a lot of hockey. Did skiing on one yellow, it's changed my skin.
And where.
All right, everybody, let's let's bring this back together here. So. Jared, looks like you made some changes.
Yeah, so I took the recommended motion that was in the staff report. And apologize to those of you on Zoom as you. Don't have the printed copy here, but I essentially added condition number six. I put that in bold, so it's easy to find. Which states three years after the first certificate of occupancy being issued, the Planet Zoning Commission and Roaring Fork School District will address any parking complaints or impacts. Due to the reduction of three parking spaces. The Plan Zoning Commission can require Roaring Fork School District to construct three additional parking spaces along the high school access road in conformance with the alternative parking plan. As submitted by the applicant. And then. For the findings of approval for the alternative compliance parking reduction. In number finding number three, after. Benefits associated with the subject standard, I added by increasing the size of the private common open space. Left the remainder of finding three the same and with finding four. Changed the end of that finding to read. The Roaring Fork School District can accommodate overflow overflow parking on the adjacent school owned surface lot. And an alternative design for parking along the high school. Access drive exists if issues arise.
High five.
Did I hear you all?
Feel things.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think that's approvable.
Jared, thanks for cranking through that real.
Yeah, of course.
Went to a safe space to get it done.
I gotta.
One of those cooking shows where you've got five minutes and you've got your three ingredients and you gotta come up with something.
And he just pulled out a cake.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Motion to recommend approval of the reserving application major site plan and alternative compliance request. For the construction of fifty multi-family residential units on lot two A and two B. North face base camp division and the following conditions and findings on these pages.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for a great project.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys so much and thanks for sitting through that with us while we work through everything.
Great, thanks. It's great stuff. So now, you know, with with everything Bob said, that common area has to be badass. I mean, you really can't miss on that thing. No pressure.
All right. Moving on.
Staff updates.
Staff updates.
Given the time we're at, I will make my. Not important staff updates extremely quick. Multi moto mobility.
I'll make my. Staff updates for the quick, the multimoto mobility and access plan. The Board of Trustees has reviewed a RFP. Staff is ironing out the final language and we anticipate releasing that here in the next couple of weeks. Comprehensive plans, printed comprehensive plans. We have them both in English and Spanish. If you guys would like a hard copy. Let me know. I see two. Let me know online if you want, and we can get you guys all a hard copy of the comp plan. And then probably the most important update is introducing Kelly. Who is our new planner, who's joined the town, so I will let her. Tell you all about herself and why she's. The perfect person for this role.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi. I won't take long.
Thanks, Bob.
But I'm very happy to be here. It's been almost a month. I apologize for missing the first meeting.
I wasn't here either, so.
I have lived in town for about ten years, raising girls, a couple of girls, and I ran the deadline in for a few years over Maine and second. But I was an urban planner for twenty years before that in California. Current planning in San Francisco proper, worked for city and county of San Francisco and. And so thrilled to be back to this work and in a place that I love. So my girls are now in college. My husband and I are up at Swiss Village, so we took over from Kathy Derby. Just down the street from her and yeah, still settling in a bit, but hoping to help Jared with the backlog and. Got several. Decent sized projects, not quite as big as this one, but things in the pipeline and. You know, yeah, lots going on, right? So lovely to have the comp plan recently updated and the UDC is in pretty good shape. Some things will be working on, I know, but anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Yeah.
So you're used to planning for small towns, then?
You know, it may sound a little cheesy, but honestly, San Francisco is a lot of small towns and and they have. You know, neighborhoods and especially once you're busy with a family and jobs, you're. That's really what made us. Happy, know that we would be happy in a small town. I have I have had family in this valley for over thirty years. It is actually the place I've been coming to the most consistently in my life, so. I did grow up in Texas. I was out of there as soon as I could, went east for ten years. Especially because it was Houston. I mean, you know. East for ten years, west for twenty, but I always kept coming to Colorado. So I have my mom is here, several siblings are here and I was always coming to this valley and. So it was very familiar territory, but. You know, San Francisco is not that big a city, actually. Either the issues are all the same. People care about the same things. Change is always hard. And it always happens, so that's why planners are here. To help everybody navigate that and, you know.
Yeah. Honestly, we're just excited to have you on the team and.
Yeah.
I'm sure Jared's very excited to. Have more support, but yeah, just very exciting. So welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, look forward to working with you.
Right on.
First and last presentation I'll have before this board restorall Kelly.
Yeah, there you go.
But yeah, that's that's all we have from a staff update unless you guys have anything else. Will you be inviting any firms to the mobility plan RFP or will just go out? Kind of in a neutral state, what's?
We'll put it up on our website, which we know every consultant scours daily waiting for the latest and greatest. RFPs to be released. There have been a few insulting agencies who have reached out and. Are aware and have requested. To be notified, so we'll notify some of them and some others that we think might be capable of handling. The M three AP. Already threw an acronym on it, no big deal. It's gonna be a hell of a lot easier than writing multi multi moto mobility and access plan. However, many times through a plan. So anyways, other than that, you know, I believe. Kevin, our Public Works Director, has a few kind of. Trade websites that he's planning on putting it up. I could see he's putting up on APA, Colorado, things like that. So we're gonna try to get the word out and see if we can't solicit some. Firms who, you know, think there could be a good fit, but we're always open to hearing from others who. Think they have the.
Chops.
Chops to to do this type of plan for this type of a community.
Sweet. Well, that'll be exciting.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with working with very opinionated communities? Try this project.
I'm 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 learning every day.
No, I mean, like, that's just like what we put on the RFP.
Oh, yes.
More opinionated than any other community, though. I've worked across this country for twenty years. There's a lot of opinions. In communities.
Everybody has it.
Anyways, cool. Well, thanks for good. It's exciting that that's moving forward.
Yeah, certainly.
Do we have any other, just quickly, any other items on like post comp plan? That you're targeting or that you need help on or that we need to keep on our kind of radar in some way?
Regarding kind of like next step action items or like wrapping up the comp plan with a bow?
No, no, no. That's wrapped. More just like, yeah, like, like now, like the 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 march forward.
Yep. So we've had a few work sessions with this group over the last. What, one in December and one in February, maybe, to kind of talk about. Prioritizing next steps and what. Action items, I think we kind of heard loud and clear from the last meeting that ADUs. And ADU regulations are kind of a high priority. I know for the Board of Trustees. The HCC Zone District and considering some of the. Unique requirements of the HCC Zone District, looking at those as a high priority for them, given. The desire to kind of. Encourage investment in the HCC and. Large development that could or could not occur over there. And then. Man, you called me. I know I'm forgetting one, but there was one more. I feel like large.
Housing strategies. Other types of housing.
So it was. And downtown north, those are the top four. Those are listed in our notes.
Water and I ran the other way. But yes, things like, yeah, other other housing strategies, whether it be tiny homes or some of the stuff that.
Yeah.
That Jared brought up. So I think those are kind of the initial ones and I know. The Historic Preservation Commission is working on a few things as well regarding. Historic preservation and kind of guidelines and things like that. So those will probably be the areas where staff's kind of gonna focus. Our energy, I'd love to say we could do more, but I know code amendments can always. Spiral very quickly when you're discussing what ifs and. How code could apply, so I know that those will will take a. Take some time and some conversation with this group and internally with staff, so.
Yeah. And. Does is parking incorporated into that H HCC? As well, or because I feel like that was.
As in reratioing?
Just with like downtown areas regarding parking. I remember that from what I recall, the the Board of Trustees were mentioning that.
Yep, I think it will be an item kind of brought up in that. Holistic part of what are some of the pinch points within the HCC that are causing people to. Sure, not, you know, whether it's floor heights or. Mandatory commercial frontage, definition of commercial space, total building height or. You know, allowances. But so, yeah, I think parking is kind of included in that HCC analysis.
Sure.
And we could say that we wanna reach out and get a third party consultant to kind of help us with taking off maybe one of these, something bigger. If if we feel that we need it, once we kind of hear some more concerns from. This group and the trustees and any interested members of the public.
Sure.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yeah. Any comments or thoughts you guys have?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner comments.
Good work, everybody. I thought that was. I don't know. I mean, it was it was an amazing project, but I appreciated that we we gave it an honest. Kind of survey and went through it with with good questions, good kind of thoughtfulness, and then we. Helped a good project get quick closure.
Yeah.
And move on. So just wanna commend everybody for that, and I actually really appreciate your comments at the end, you know, like. We reserve things like positive things like that for positive projects. It's just it can be that simple.
Yeah.
That was great.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah. Well, thanks, Dick. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
He made a motion and second.
I was seconding your motion.
Oh, I don't I can't make a motion.
No, I know, but you said it in a way that maybe.
I was questioning.
Motion to adjourn.
I don't I don't know how how stringent we are, Robert's rules of order and.
Second.
Got a second, three seconds.
Anyone want a fashion show this weekend?
Later, everybody.
Saturday, maybe?